Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, it'll be Tuesday. The holiday will be Tuesday, but just when our normal is.
Okay. It'll be Wednesday then, yeah?
Okay. Why do you make it? Because we only get Tuesday.
I just went to air.
Before a quorum to start. Sure. Good morning. For those of you who are watching virtually, we are waiting for a quorum to start this meeting. And those who are here physically, we are waiting. Just be patient, please. Thank you.
Um, we've only dropped payments on in the outside.
Good morning, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order for the June 6th, 2023 Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We're going to call roll. Ms. Tesmer. Ms. Farrell.
Here.
Ms. Meriwether.
Here.
Mr. Sherrett.
I'm here.
Mr. Bronner's absent. The chair is, is here. Okay, we're going to approve the amendments for the May meeting. What you have in front of you?
Question number second.
Ms. Tesmer.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather.
Approve.
Mr. Sherrett.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kent, I say yes. So, minutes are approved. Turn the meeting over to the attorney.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This is a board comprised of members of the community that are appointed by our city commission. They are not city staff and they are charged with listening and deciding requests for variances from our city's land development code. Where granting that request would not be contrary to public interest, where little enforcement would create an undue hardship or a burden. The way the procedures will work this morning, the chair will call each applicant forward. If you could state your name, your address, and just give a brief description of what your variance request is. The board members will be have, will be given an opportunity to ask any questions they may have, as well as city staff will also be able to present. And if there are any members in the audience to speak for or against a particular variance, they'll be given the ability to, to speak as well on that. I would ask if you are planning to speak today at all? If you could stand at this time and raise your right hand and I'll swear you in? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I, and I would advise everyone, currently we have our quorum of five members, but with that being said, it will require a unanimous vote of, to approve a variance in accordance with our bylaws. So I just want, I just want our people here that are seeking variance requests to understand that it will require a unanimous vote. I believe we're, we are anticipating Mr. Bronner coming? Do we have confirmation that he was? Okay, so he may just be running a little bit late, so we should have six members. Thank you.
So our business is, and a new chair? Open for discussion? Nominate Mr. Kent. Would you like for me to be the chair? Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Now we need a vice chair. Who would like to be the vice chair?
I approve Ms. Mayweather.
You accept that? Second it. Ms. Tesmer? Mrs. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
Mr. Kent says yes. Okay, we got our new chair and vice chair. Moving on to item number six, Lakeland Moonwalk, Polk County requests a 30-foot variance to allow rear back setback of 35 feet in lieu of the required 65 minimum setback for principal structures specified by table 3.4-1 in the Land Development Code to allow for the construction of an, of an office warehouse building, a property located at 2705 New Tampa Highway. Who is here to speak for this? Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Michelle Bowles. I'm at 303 Howard. We bought our property because of the variance and they bought the property knowing the variance. So.
Is this for the moon? Do you have kind of speak first?
Is this for the, is this for the Moonwalk?
Yes. I live behind there.
Have your chance to speak, man.
Oh, okay. We just need the applicant to come forward first.
Gotcha.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll repeat it later. Okay. What about that? Applicant, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Guy Lalande and we're asking for a variance at 2705 New Tampa Highway.
Please, sir. I'm sorry? Your ass for the record?
My home address is 640 Howard Avenue.
Okay.
Lakeland, Florida, 33815.
Okay.
We're currently seeking a 35-foot setback instead in lieu of the 65, that's the minimum setback. However, there is already a 30-foot buffer between that two adjacent properties. There's already a 30-foot buffer. Part of the reason why we're requesting that setback is FDOT is requesting to acquire property along New Tampa, New Tampa Highway for expansion. So that's the main reason.
Yeah, because we have to go all the way.
If you could, if you could talk in the mic, and you can use that one as well if you need to.
Okay. So, the main reason why we're looking for that 30-foot, so the.
Name and address, please.
It's Guy Lalande III. I'm at 6036 Cherry Road, Lakeland, Florida. Thank you, sir. So yeah, so we're looking for that 35-foot setback because with the state taking that property in the front, it's just going to push our storefrontage right off of New Tampa Highway, which is then it's going to impede with trucks pulling in, with our additional parking, with everything else right there. They're just trying to keep the building setback as far as we can off of New Tampa Highway.
However, with, with the 30-foot setback, or the buffer that's already there, and if we're granted the 30, that still allows 65 feet from the backside. That's all we have.
Good morning. For the record, Todd Bargo with Community and Economic Development Department. This is a closer up view of the subject property outlined in blue here. You can see it fronts New Tampa Highway and then to the north is some single-family residential along, or in Lone Palm. The request is for a 30-foot variance to the rear setback between industrial and residential property. Again, here's the, the subject property outlined in blue. It is zoned I1, which is our light industrial zoning. And then to the north again is the single-family residential, RA1 zoning for Lone Palm. So the request again is for a 30-foot variance for Lakeland Moonwalk to instruct a new office slash warehouse for their business on the subject property. This property is almost four acres in size and again is oriented along New Tampa Highway. To, oh, wanted to add, so that this property has been zoned I1 since 1994. So it's been industrial for a long, long time. This next slide is the setbacks for the suburban special purpose context district, which SSP is the context district for the subject property. So in using this table, you go to, across the top, you see context I2 and all other districts not specified, or I3 will, again, the zoning's I1, so you fall back over here to all other districts not specified. The rear setback, the minimum rear setback for all other districts not specified, or is 65 feet from a residential district. So that is what's required by the Land Development Code when, again, when residential and industrial abut. This was provided to us by Lakeland Moonwalk and this is the location if the variance is not approved. So this is the, where the, the building is the red square on the left side of the, of the screen. This is the 65-foot setback line. And you can see how close it would probably be to New Tampa Highway, especially if FDOT comes through with their study and, and takes some property, which I'll get to in, in a little bit. This next slide is again, the red square on the left is the proposed building location, but this is if the variance was approved and the building was at the 35-foot setback line if the 30-foot variance is approved. Again, so it's important to note that, as the gentleman from Lakeland Moonwalk stated that they're requesting the variance for the reason that the future plans of FDOT is to widen New Tampa Highway. And their study, the FDOT study is suggesting that approximately 20 feet of right-of-way will be needed to be acquired from the subject property when the subject, when the, when the, sorry, when the project moves forward. So this, there'd be a 20-foot strip along here that would now belong to, to New Tampa Highway. Again, according to the applicant, that would leave the proposed office warehouse building uncomfortably close to New Tampa Highway if the variance is not granted. So the other justification, and this is kind of the same map as before, but with an aerial superimposed on the back side of it. So again, the 50-foot setback along New Tampa Highway. The red outline box is the proposed location of the office warehouse building and it's set as if the variance is approved, it's set 35 feet back from the property line. And then the other justification for the request is the 30-foot buffer and drainage easement strip that the developers of Lone Palm foresaw to put into, into the development. This 30-foot wide strip surrounds Lone Palm, at least this phase of Lone Palm, on the east, the south, and part of the west. And again, buffers it from the industrial and commercial locations along New Tampa Highway. The strip functions as a natural vegetative buffer between the single-family uses to the north and those businesses because no structures can be constructed within the buffer strip slash easement. Granted, the variance would still result in the 65-foot rear setback mandated by the Land Development Code. And I'm just going to show you real quick that this is, this buffer strip is platted. So it is, it, it. It is recorded in the legal statutes of, of Polk County on a, on a recorded plat, approved plat. So you could, here's the Howard Avenue and you can see the, the single-family lots here on the south side. And if I zoom in a little closely, again, you can see Howard Avenue right there. Howard Avenue. And then this is the 30-foot, it says 30-foot drainage easement and buffer strip that separates, again, the single-family residential from the commercial and industrial uses on, along New Tampa Highway. So we did do a site visit to get some pictures. This is on the neighboring property to the west and we're looking eastward along New Tampa Highway. So we're looking back towards the site. This is the site here. This is a little bit further deeper into that neighboring property and looking back at the site again, so we're still looking east. And this is turning 90 degrees to the north from that neighboring property, again, just to show you the, the thickness of the vegetative buffer. This is that 30-foot vegetative buffer strip right there that separates the single-family from, from the commercial uses. And then I walked to the next side, the other side of the neighboring property and got another shot of the 30-foot buffer. Again, just to show you, it's, it's pretty nice. So those were all taken from roughly here, looking north, and then the second one was right about here, looking north. So.
Can we discuss this? Do you mind leaving that, that one up?
Which one? Sorry.
That one.
This one? Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So we do recommend approval. We believe the, the hardship suffered by the applicant related to the FDOT's plans to widen New Tampa Highway and the requested relief is reasonable and proportionate to the degree of hardship. Approval of the 30-foot variance would still leave 65 feet, which is what is mandated by the code, between the single-family property line to the north and the new office warehouse building, which would meet the spirit and intent of the Land Development Code. And I do want to add too, that I checked and the, the, the buffer required between industrial and single-family residential includes an eight-foot fence. So there would also be an eight-foot fence that would have to be constructed along this property line when they come in for their site plan review. So.
Typically an eight-foot high fence or wall, and it also has a, a 12-foot wide landscape strip with a double row of planted trees. If they preserve that area, which they will be incentivized to do because of the tree preservation requirements, obviously the property's heavily wooded. If they take out more trees than are allowed, they would have to pay the, the compensate for those trees there. So would be in their best interest to actually preserve as much of that as possible to keep a natural kind of buffer there to the north. But do you believe Todd has some comments from a neighbor and I believe there's at least one person here to speak?
Do you?
Oh, it's my turn?
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you for your patience.
Sorry.
State your name and.
Michelle Bowles. I'm at 303 Howard Avenue. And again, we bought the property because of the easement. We knew that there was going to be something eventually that went behind there, but they also knew the easement and the property lines before they bought it. They could easily run their building the other way. If they're so afraid of part of the building being hit because of the road, do it the other way or make an L-shaped building. You can do something to change it. Don't take down the beauty of that area. I mean, there's, it's, like you said, the natural preserve is just absolutely gorgeous.
Your house on the screen?
Yes, it is.
What is it?
Uh, let's see if I, um, here. You're welcome.
For the record, my house is a little further north of that on Howard.
Is it?
Yes. Yes.
Are you?
Box on Howard also.
Also did receive an email from someone who's objecting to the variance request. I have the email here. Going to hand it out to you and then I'll summarize it.
The reasons I asked for the picture to stay up, when you sent out notices to the area asking their thoughts or opinions, how many of the houses would that have gone to?
Probably just kind of those that are adjacent, so I believe, probably the four properties there that are merely affected by it for no variance.
The line get the 12 letters, Ramilda.
And we also do to the west and across the street, but obviously the greatest impacts would be to the, to the north, so.
And we also did get some, the gentleman who owns this property came in, just, he got the letter and, and was wondering what it was all about. He didn't have any objections once I explained it to him, but, so yeah.
Is that a residential property or commercial property? The one you just mentioned?
I think it's commercial. No, no, it's zoned residential. Sorry. My bad.
Office space alone?
I believe it's an office and warehouse for their, yeah, come on up.
Do the rentals for the, the inflatable slides and other play equipment that you see a lot of parties and other special events? So my understanding, this would be their, the area where they store and maintain and keep them there like that?
And I asked because.
The parking is not shown on the site plan here. That would be done at the time of site plan review, so they'll have to meet the requirements for that.
The parking, the parking will be on the east side of the building, closer to the south of the building. And we just want everybody to know that majority, all of our equipment is stored inside of the warehouse. Nothing is, nothing's left blown up or obstructing any type of views, especially with the city's requirements with the items that we have when we're cleaning with the setback on New Tampa Highway. We did try to rotate the building horizontal along with New Tampa, but unfortunately this property has a conservation easement built on it. So if we did rotate the building, it's going to impede that conservation easement because you have to have required setback with that as well. So a majority, I think two acres of the east side will never be touched because it's just locked in. And I understand her concerns and anybody who's in Howard, especially my father, he lives.
I lived there too.
Off Howard. We, we want to keep all that natural vegetation. We want to have, we like to have, keep things clean and nice and we don't want to create any type of animosity with our, with our neighboring homes right there, especially with, we play golf there, we go there a lot, we attend a lot of events there, we know a ton of residents there, so we definitely don't want to upset the, upset the neighborhood.
Any, any XX noise, anything like that?
No, no. During normal business hours, of course, there'd be trucks going in and out, equipment being blown up. I mean, if you ever heard a bounce house when it's inflated, it's, it's not really very loud. loud, other than some guys bumping up, cleaning them. All of our stuff is usually done at other people's houses or events here in Lakeland. We don't, we don't, we do not hold parties at that place. It's not a place to come and have a party. We are not designed to set up. It's simply storage and cleaning. You know, you may have customers coming in and rent. And also with Mrs. Bowles' concern, we do understand, my son did state that. I know it's going to sound crazy. A lot of people like to develop and try to get as much pavement as possible. I'm not really built like that, so. I like the trees. We like the buffer. We want to keep as much of that buffer as possible. There's, there's a couple of trees along that immediate thing that are dead. Of course, those would have to come out because that would be direct correlation to the building, maybe falling on the building. But you know, our whole thing is to keep it beautiful as well. I understand the neighborhood pretty well since I've lived there for about eight years. I love the neighborhood myself well. My wife has lived in that neighborhood all of her life, so believe me, I've, I've answered to my wife, and that's, so.
Where's your entrance?
It's going to come off of New Tampa Highway approximately.
If you go south.
Behind you.
Oh, is there? Yeah.
So it's right, right here?
Yeah. That's the entrance. Almost primary to in front of the building, and then adjacent to here is where they'll be cleaning. So there'll be more than, I mean, we're asking for the setback primarily just for the building and, and still allow a buffer. I mean, no one's going to build up right up to the end of it. That's not our design. Now, we actually originally wanted to go horizontal, but we'd be trying to clean inside of retention pond, so.
Yeah, another thing too, if you think if we, if we had it going horizontal, then you're going to have more, you're going to have more of the building viewable from, you know, from the neighborhood, which we hope none of it's being seen because if you've ever been back there, I mean, them trees are 20, 30-foot tall.
It is beautiful.
But at least there's only going to be 60-foot of building versus 199-foot of the building visible on that backside. Okay? Thank you.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. Could you just, just briefly elaborate how you determine the size or the dimensions of the building?
What do we use to decide the dimensions on a building?
Decide how big to make this warehouse for you guys.
We decided to build the buildings, to be quite honest, we needed additional storage, and we've outgrown three other locations, so we, we'd made a determination order on both the businesses. We needed approximately 10,000 to 12,000 square feet.
Yeah, we're currently, yeah, we're currently moving into a, a 10,000-square-foot warehouse right now off of George Jenkins Boulevard, which is east of our property till we can actually begin this project as well. We're just growing at a decent rate, and we feel that this is a good size that we can maintain and stay where we're at.
And would, if this is not granted, would you continue on with construction without the variance?
I, I think we would, we would make the, we'd have our builder and engineer go back and see what best suits, suits both. But unfortunately, with the, with the state taking so much of that frontage, it's, it's almost a double-edged sword. Do we want, do we want our building right off of New Tampa Highway, or can we, you know, come to agreement on the, on the setback since we still meet that 65-foot that the city's requiring?
And also, just, and it's like the one question for you. Just so unclear, if the variance is granted, that vegetative buffer strip will still be honored, correct?
Yeah, the 30-foot that's existing there? Yes. Yeah, they, no, nobody can touch that.
Not only that, that 30-foot buffer is, you can't really see, it's also a canal, a canal and vegetative. It's, it's like a jungle.
Drainage easement.
It's literally like a jungle. I mean, you can barely see through it. We're, we're not going to build directly up to this fence. On top of that setback back there, we're actually, all of the trees we're going to remove are the ones that are dead or propose a threat, a threat to either their side or either side. And then, of course, we'd maintain excellent landscaping, so, you know, we want it to look nice. We want it to be perceived well by the neighborhood as well.
Can I ask you two questions? The first is, the house that was on the corner, you said that the resident didn't object. Was there any other conversation from the resident?
Uh, no, he really just, he got the letter and he came in to find out what it was about when he saw that the building was going to be on this half, on the far half of the lot. He didn't have any, any concerns.
Okay. And my second question is, the email that was sent in, talking about the, the habitat for the animals, was there, is there any way to judge or determine how the encroachment might injure or?
We had, we had a full environmental study done on the property mainly because it is conservation easement, so we had to have a team come out, check if there's any gopher turtles and all sorts of different types of wildlife and everything. Everything came back and approved, but so we're still in the plans, they're still where the, where a lot of like the, the conservation is. There's still like another 30-foot buffer along that east side anyway, so we're still keeping a ton of buffer from a lot of that vegetation. So half of this property won't even be.
Won't even be touched.
Won't even be touched by us, anybody, ever.
And just to confirm what you were saying earlier, were saying because of the conservation easement, you couldn't build on that portion of the property anyway?
Yeah. And just to the, like the north of our building and to the east, there's going to be a, a large retention pond that takes the majority of, of that side too before it hits the conservation side, so yeah.
Right up along that, so it'll all be planted trees and decorative?
A couple of questions. So assuming everything goes well with Lakeland Moonwalk, and they're a good neighbor and the building is exactly like they've stated, the next tenant that comes in or uses the property in the light industrial, what other types of, is there anything else that could fit in that category that may be more disruptive than Lakeland Moonwalk when, when we're talking about some of the objections from the email, like the light pollution?
So, you know, this, this building will have to have fixtures that meet the Land Development Code and the light fixtures, regulations in the code make sure that the, the light, the fixtures have to be shielded and they have to shine down, so they, so there should be no bleeding of light over to adjacent properties.
The last comment they had made on the email was a 10-to-12-foot barrier, and I know Mr. Lyons has stated an eight-foot barrier would be, I think, required.
Yes.
Is there any consideration to maybe make it 10 feet so that the people behind you are happier with what, you know, at least allowing?
Could you, could you better explain that if you don't mind me asking? But the.
So in the, in the email that was presented that has some objections, they said if this was approved, perhaps you could consider a 10-to-12-foot barrier.
A fence.
Yeah, a fence, right.
For the fence, I'd not oppose to 10-foot. If that would help at 12, I mean, I don't know that, you get into different pricing structures between 8 and 12. I mean, like I said, we want to be good neighbors. We're not, no one's, no one wants to say, oh, my God, we got 65 feet, and then let's build right up to the, that's not our intentions nor our design as shown at the, the building size there, but.
And also, on the, and I wish we had the other drawings, but on the north side of the building, within that, that setback, I think there's another, there's going to be like a light drainage area on our side too, so nothing's being built on that north side. There's no.
We're putting in additional drainage.
No lights, no, no concrete, no nothing.
Yeah, we don't have that picture.
So it's all, it's all vegetation all in the north of that building. Everything is south from that building down that we're doing.
And it's like additional drainage that goes to the retention pond, so we're not, we can't even, we're not even using that either, so there'll be additional. It's, nothing's going to be there.
Motion to move, a motion to approve, and there's a second. Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, Cole Springer, Springer Construction, requested two-foot variance to allow a maximum fence height of eight foot in lieu of the maximum height of six foot for residential fence along the rear yard on 400 Palmola, Palmola Drive, Palmola Street. Good morning. State your name and address.
Morning. My name is Cole Springer. I live at 400 Palmola Street, and I'm looking for a variance to build an eight-foot fence in lieu of a six-foot fence. So just a couple of talking points for me. There is a city alleyway behind my house and my neighbor's house, of which I have no control over who comes and goes from there. I will mention, at the top of my street is a medical marijuana distribution facility where they sell medical marijuana. Nothing wrong with that, but it has created a lot of vehicular traffic, not only on Palmola, but on the alleyway behind me. And so foot traffic, bike traffic, vehicle traffic, it's a safety concern for me and my young family. So I've got two young girls under the age of two, as well as my wife, who's a stay-at-home mom. A six-foot fence, I could peek over that and see into the backyard any day of the week, see what's going on back there. I have a, a gate currently that I keep locked, however, if somebody wanted to get in my backyard, they could do that, and there, I have no control over that. So ultimately, Hurricane Ian came, I had a huge tree limb fall, knocked my fence over. I took it upon myself just to build the fence back as it was whenever I bought the house. And again, I've got a couple of other neighbors in the community that they've got two-story units right on the alleyway. I've got another neighbor near me that has an eight-foot fence, so it is more of a safety concern for me to get the eight-foot variance more so than anything else. So that is the reason why I'm here today. Oh, one, one other thing I will add. There was a variance approved, I think, two months ago over in the Dixieland area, and so the reason, or one of the reasons why they were requesting the variance, same thing, hurricane damage. They also had made mention of their neighbors have a smoke pit or fire pit right outside of their fence, so they wanted the extra two feet to prevent smoke from coming over. And then their neighbors had young kids that kick balls over their fence. That variance was approved. The only other thing I forgot to mention, there's a house to the northeast of me where the police have been called multiple times for domestic violence and drug charges, so again, is a safety concern for me and my young family to ultimately get that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, again, Todd Vargo with Community and Economic Development. The subject property is in the Lake Hollingsworth neighborhood, and it is this 84-by-141-foot interior parcel. It's currently improved with a single-family detached home, which is originally built in 1986 according to the Polk County Property Appraiser. Here's a little closer look at the lot, and this is actually the site plan provided by Mr. Springer. And you see the proposed, or the fence runs along the back of the property adjacent to this alleyway. It is set back three feet so that they can put the recycling bin and trash bins out there, because when you live on an alleyway, that's where the solid waste comes to pick their things up on the alleyway. The orange line's the property line, and that purple slash pink line is the eight-foot fence. Here's a, a picture from the side of the house, looking into his backyard, looking at the inside of the fence. There's the gate that he talked about where they can take out their trash and, and recycling bins. This is the back of the house and the, the fence from the alleyway. And Mr. Springer was right. If you look down the alleyway, there's another eight-foot fence. I, I apologize. The slide says 10-foot tall fence. I don't know what I was thinking when I was typing. It's, it's an eight-foot fence. I must have been half asleep when I did that or something. Anyway, so, so that's, I think, two lots down from him, closer to Lake Hollingsworth. There are some, so the, so the alleyway splits the lots that front Palmola to the lots that front Belmar, and the lots that front Belmar that are on the north side of the alleyway are in the South Lake Morton Historic District. The housing stock on those, again, because they're historic, they're a little older, there, there's nothing wrong with them at all. And, you know, some of them are well-maintained, some of them are not so well-maintained. So this is a look along the alleyway at the properties, the backs of the properties that front Belmar Street. So this is, this is one here. Again, you know, there, it's nothing for code enforcement or anything, but, you know, Yeah. So, you know, they, they maybe could use a little plus-ing. And then, I don't know, maybe code enforcement could do something about that car. I'm not going to say anything. So based on our site visit, the eight-foot fence appears to be well-constructed and aesthetically pleasing, as you can see from the pictures. Well, there is no evidence of a significant grade change, which is usually what we talk about when we allow fences taller than six feet. The alleyway, as Mr. Springer said, is used frequently by both vehicles, pedestrians and cyclists, and an eight-foot high fence clearly provides a greater degree of privacy and security than a six-foot high fence for many nuisances generated by the adjacent uses to the north and the, the frequent use of the alleyway. Certainly, the hardship is not the result of any action taken by the applicant, and the requested relief for an eight-foot fence appears to be reasonable and proportionate to the degree of hardship suffered. If there are no substantive objections from adjoining property owners, we recommend the variance be considered for approval, and I'll stand for questions.
Going back to the pictures with the fence, the wooden fence, please, that one. What am I looking at? Whose, whose fence is that now?
This is Mr. Springer's fence.
So that, that would be the northeast corner.
But that's not your house.
No, that's my house, yes, sir. Yep, so that, that wooden fence would be, you were standing at the northeast corner of my lot, looking back towards my house, and then that shell driveway you see, that's a back entrance for my next-door neighbor to the east of my property, and then I have a hedge with a chain-link fence within the hedge that basically separates my property from their property.
So the lake is?
It's behind us, yeah.
The lake would be to the left on that picture.
Looking from the alley.
I'm kind of looking up towards south Florida.
Yeah, he's looking to the west, the lake would be to, to the east, which would be to the left side of the photo.
His property's on the corner?
Nope.
His property's not on the corner?
No, sir.
My apologies. You were the house on?
No.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Yeah. No, no, he's, he's up a, a couple of lots.
So we're just looking for 10, eight-foot?
Eight-foot, yes, sir.
Question? Gotcha.
Motion in a second?
Is the motion in a second? Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gadd, yes. It's approved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Item eight, Gadd and Associates requests 55-foot variance to allow a minimum setback of 90-foot feet, 95-foot feet, from the right away from Lone Palm Drive in lieu of the 150, minimum setback specified by planned unit development zoning for Lone Palm Golf Club, and 125 variance setback to allow a setback of 75 for the adjacent property. Who is here to speak for Lone Palm or Gadd Construction? Good morning. State your name and address.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Rodney Gadd with Gadd and Associates. Our address is 4685 East County Road 548. As you mentioned, we are requesting to reduce the setbacks along Lone Palm to 95 feet from 150 and to 75 feet from 200 from the residential. The golf course is teaming with Florida Southern College to construct a new golf clubhouse for their golf team. The original setbacks were put in place, I believe, back in.
The, um, golf course is teaming with Florida Southern College to construct a new, uh, golf clubhouse for their golf team. Uh, the original setbacks were put in place, I believe, back in ninety-four, um, as a result of just bringing the property into compliance. And they set the setbacks based on what was out there. There wasn't any proposed construction at time, so it made sense to use those setbacks because that's what was there currently. Um, our plan is to put the building, and I was hopeful we could pull the site plan up. So what you can't see there because there's, there's quite a few mature trees is basically this building is going to be proposed on top of an existing asphalt parking area that's relatively unused. It's kind of a remote, it's the furthest point away from the existing clubhouse, so people normally park closer. So we're going to, the plan was to remove one row of parking, place the building here, keep the existing parking, and keep as many of the mature trees, uh, there's, this place has been around a while, so there's quite a few large oaks and large palms. Uh, again, trying to keep as many of those as possible. Um, uh, part of this is we'll have to construct a six-foot fence on the southern part of the property and remove a portion of parking and turn that into a grassed area, uh, as well as supplement it with additional landscaping and buffering to meet the, the code requirements. So again, plan is to place it on top of an existing asphalt parking area, keep as many trees as possible, still maintain a sizable, um, setback from the residential at seventy-five feet and a fairly large setback from the roadway. Uh, the setback from the roadway is actually larger than, than any of the houses down through there. So we're still trying to maintain quite a bit of distance from there. Um, with that, I'll stand for questions. We have representatives here from Lone Palm, as well as Florida Southern College, that can answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning.
Thank you.
For the record, Maristall, Community, Senior Planner, Community Economic Development. The property is zoned, uh, PUD, uh, with planned unit development, um, within the suburban neighborhood context of sub-district. Um, this request is for fifty-five-foot variance to allow a minimum setback of ninety-five feet from the right-of-way of Lone Palm Drive and one-hundred-and-twenty-five-feet variance to allow the setback, minimum setback of seventy-five feet from the adjacent residential property to the south. Um, this here is the subject property, uh, the entire, um, Lone Palm Golf Course. And the area change is just this small portion right here. And this is just a zoomed-in, um, area, the, the aerial change that you can see a little clearer. Currently, the parcel to the south is a vacant residential parcel. And then the rest have been, um, developed there. And this here is just a, another overview so you can see, um, the aerial, um, the existing, um, Lone Palm Golf Course. And then the, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, uh, got a little frozen here. So here's the, um, existing golf course. And then this is the proposed area of change right here. So there is a significant, um, distance between the two. So here. So the, um, proposed, uh, new construction of the golf course is, um, well, uh, golf course is for the Florida Southern College, um, golf program. Um, the property is approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet south of the existing, um, clubhouse. And, um, and, and it's part of the improved area, improved parking area that is existing there. Um, the proposed request is to obtain the, um, variance for, uh, to, the building is approximately fifty-one-hundred square foot. And this here is a, a couple of photos, um, current photos of the property. Um, this is from the western boundary facing the golf course. And then this is the, um, northwest, um, corner facing north. Uh, you see the, um, existing golf course there in the foreground there. Um, this is the north, uh, boundary, parking boundary facing south towards the, um, residential. And this is the east boundary facing west. So this, you can see the, um, uh, this is the existing parking and then the, uh, rear parking, um, right over there where the proposed building will be. And then this is a northwest corner facing east towards the, um, Lone Palm Drive. This is northeast, uh, facing southwest towards the, um, parking lot area. And you can see how it's split there. Uh, this is, uh, northwest facing south, again, uh, just so you can see the, um, the grass area there. And the southwest facing west. This is the southeast corner of the, um, property, uh, facing north on, following, um, Palm Drive, Lone Palm Drive. And this is, um, southeast facing south on Lone Palm Drive. And this is the proposed site plan, um, of the property, um, showing the, proposed building. So the applicant's justification for the request pertains to the lack of foresight for, um, in which the, the year that the planned unit development was, um, approved. Um, and so the, uh, development, the limit, limited alternatives for new development, um, you know, we're trying to accommodate, um, here. So the new proposed, um, building is, uh, minimum impacts on to the adjacent parcel to the south. Um, and, and to include also a type-A buffer consisting of a six-foot, um, fence or wall with landscaping will be required at site plan review to help in minimizing it, um, uh, an additional buffer between the vacant parcel and, um, the property. Uh, the request relief would not be contrary to public interest. The hardship suffered is not a result of any action taken by the applicant. Um, the request, uh, relief is reasonable, uh, and proportionate to the degree of hardship and minimum amount necessary to accommodate the clubhouse, um, without encroaching onto the existing golf course. And due to lack of, um, viable alternatives to, uh, staff recommends that this request be considered for approval.
To speak in favor or against? Come up, sir. State your name and address, please.
My name's Monte Irworth. I live at six-five-one Lone Palm Drive, which is directly across from the subject, uh, place to be built. So, um, I have actually first a question, probably for Mr. Gadd. If you notice, uh, across the street, uh, there's a black line. And I assume that's part of the right-of-way that cuts across my yard. Um, and a kind of significant part of it. So it would, that line goes over a mature crepe myrtle, a mature oak, my main for my water, uh, a garden area, three palms. And I actually have a U-shaped driveway. So if that land were to be taken for purposes of building this to create an offset, which I'm not sure if that's actually what's proposed here, uh, that would be a pretty large impact on me. So I would like to have someone explain to me what exactly that line means in terms of our property.
This is showing the, your property line. And then, um, this here is the, um, road and the, um, property boundaries for, um...
I got that, man, so I don't care about all that. All I care about is what's on my property.
The, the right-of-way there, the, um, the east side there, that would be your front property line?
Yes, sir.
Um, this is not affecting the right-of-way. It's not, it, it pertains to their setback from their side of that, which would be the west side of, of the street there. So they're asking for a reduction, I believe, fifty-five feet. Um, there'd be ninety-five feet from that line versus hundred-and-fifty feet. They're not doing anything to your side of the, of, of, of the right-of-way.
Thank you. The other thing I have, obviously, is I'm directly across from this. Um, I, I think they're going to build the buildings, uh, that look like everything else there, and that's great, uh, they're trying to do continuity. I like that they're trying to save the trees, it's wonderful. Obviously, I have a beautiful view of the golf course. And every evening, the sun sets right across there, it's gorgeous. It won't be anymore. So, obviously, I believe there's an impact to me economically because that could reduce the value of my home. And there'll be a bunch of kids across the street doing whatever kids do. So, uh, while I want the university to have a golf course, a club, uh, for their team, uh, I'm, I'm good with that. But I do say that this isn't without impact. Obviously, I believe I will suffer for this thing being there.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor or against? Discussion? Additional questions? Have a motion, is there a second? Motion and second. Would you like to speak before we vote? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Name's, uh, Case Guard with Registered Construction. Uh, address is seven-three-four Scott Lake Village South in Lakeland. And, um, wanted to discuss the impact on this particular project, um, and educate everyone with the students and the amount of activity that will be on this site, uh, for this duration of the school year. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, they have the fall semester and spring semester. Um, and primarily evenings, uh, from two to five o'clock will be occupied for both men's and women's programs, summertime. It will still be hundred percent maintained year-round. And, um, beautification is, is number one in our book, maintenance, um, and then safety and security of the facility and the community around there. So just wanted to give you guys that little bit of, uh, update and information there.
Story or two?
Uh, a single story, yes.
And so just to, um, clarify, the, this is just for the schools golf program? It'll be used during the school year?
Only for the school year, yes.
And the hours of operation typically the, uh, early, late afternoon from two to five?
Correct.
And so there will be no, no, um, special events in the evenings or weekends, anything that could bring additional non-registered traffic? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Lee White, I'm the men's golf coach at Florida Southern College. Uh, my address is four-one-four-one Bay Shore Boulevard, Tampa. Uh, yeah, so we were very appreciative of the ownership of Lone Palm, the membership of Lone Palm and their support. Um, without the membership support, we've enjoyed, uh, privileges there over the last forty-plus years. So when we met with the ownership, we, uh, we discussed this idea of developing a, a new home to, you know, benefit the student athletes that we have, men and women, on an equal amount. Um, will be represented inside the building. So, yeah, as, as Case stated, this will primarily be used, you know, from, on a midday, from one, two o'clock to around five, five-thirty in the afternoon. Um, typically, on a typical day, you know, the men and women are not both there. So there'll normally only be maybe four or five cars there at a time. Um, and, and with Wayne, the general manager of Lone Palm, and, and Rodney and Case, and everyone's working together to make this a real beautiful project and, and uniform to the current pickleball project that is ongoing there at the facility. So we're just appreciative and, uh, excited for the opportunity.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second? Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent, yes. It's approved, congratulations. Number nine. Homeowner Brent Elliott requested two-foot variance to allow a maximum fence height of eight-foot in lieu of the maximum height fence, six-foot for residential fences and walls and rear yards specified by figure four-point-four-point-one, the Land Development Code. Property is on twenty-two-fourteen Coventry Avenue. Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name and address.
Brent Elliott, twenty-two-fourteen Coventry Avenue, Lakeland, Florida. So we bought the house about a year and a half, and we've been making improvements to it and, and whatnot, we love the home. Um, the southern boundary has an old fence that's there. It's old wooden fence that's been kind of engulfed with vines and it's deteriorating. And so, um, what we're, and, and we have an elevation change that you can, you can somewhat see from the begin, from the front of the house, closest to the road, uh, you know, road level, and then it starts to slope downward. And you can see the, um, the fence that's there now, the six-foot PVC fence that's there now, um, due to the elevation change and the grade change going downward, uh, how, um, how the fence slopes down. If you, if there's another image, kind of more from the angle there, you can, you know, you can see that there as it, as it converts from the PVC to that, I dare even call it wooden, it's more just vine fences, um, as it, as it's gotten engulfed with the vines. So what I'm, what my request is just to extend, uh, at that point where that break is between the PVC and that wood, is to allow an eight-foot fence to have a more seamless, um, sightline, if you will, of how the, of how the fence will extend down to the, the back of the property line. And then again, mostly, if not entirely, due to the elevation change.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Philip Scarson, Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. Yeah, Mr. Elliott did a great job, um, obviously describing his, uh, his variance, um, request. This is a, uh, seventy-eight-hundred-square-foot lot in the Lake Hollings, uh, Lake Hollingsworth neighborhood. It's a sixty, uh, sixty-five-by-one-twenty interior lot with an existing five-thousand-plus-square-foot, uh, single-family home, uh, built in two thousand and ten, according to the Polk County Property Appraiser records. The zoning is, uh, RA-one, single-family. Um, what they're requesting, um, as Mr. Elliott mentioned, is to replace a seventy-foot portion along the southern property line with an eight-foot fence. And as we get into the pictures, um, we show you that definitely elevation change is, um, you know, this is the, I think this is the third variance I think we've had on, on, um, on Coventry this year that are related to, um, uh, the, the slope and the, and the, and the elevation change along, um, uh, along Coventry. This is in the thick of things, right around the areas where we previously had the other variances. Um, there was one for a driveway and then the other one was for a fence along the same stretch. Um, as we know, the property slopes down north towards Lake Hollingsworth. Uh, so the property to the south is in a much greater elevation. And if we look at this picture here, you can tell this, this, and, and it also slopes down as you go, as you, as we look east here. So not only is it sloping down, uh, towards the, towards the north, it's sloping down towards the east as well, creating that odd elevation change. Um, as you can see here, yeah, the, 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 the house to the south, um, even with an eight-foot fence extended here, uh, it really doesn't do much for privacy as well. There's an existing eight-foot fence along the back. But, uh, the eight-foot, you know, will help, uh, in the situation. But obviously, it's not going to be the, you know, you know, the hundred percent, uh, privacy, but it will definitely help, uh, with that elevation change. This is, uh, looking due south at the property next door. Um, and again, that, the existing fence has obviously just gotten overgrown, uh, with vines. So he's looking to replace this seventy-foot portion with a new eight-foot fence. Uh, and this is looking, uh, due east, uh, at the bottom of the driveway. Um, at, um, is that a wall or a fence there, Mr. Elliott? So it's at a, at a, at a eight-foot concrete wall that's already there. And this is just, uh, the corners of the property. This is, uh, looking south. This is the, the fence he's looking to replace and with that, with that wall adjacent there. Again, I'll, uh, leave here and in there with the, with the site plan. Um, so again, he's looking to replace that seventy-foot run of, of six-foot fence. Um, when evaluating fence height variances, staff determines if there's unique features related to the land itself, which would, um, grant the variance. In this case, obviously, the, the adjacent property to the south sits at a higher elevation than, uh, than the proposed eight-foot fence and will, um, uh, and reducing the effectiveness of, of the privacy, of the privacy fence on this, along that shared property boundary line. Due to the grade change, a six-foot height fence does not provide adequate privacy when viewed from the side yard. Um, the requested, uh, relief is reasonable and proportionate to the degree of hardship suffered by the applicant and, uh, would not be contrary to public interest, provided that there's no substantive, uh, objections from many neighbors, which we haven't received any. Um, the staff is recommending approval for the variance request. And we'll stand for any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
Did you receive any phone calls or emails?
Did not.
Okay, and I don't believe there's anyone here to speak.
And a second to approve? Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Mr. Kent, yes. It's approved. Thank you. Item number ten. A homeowner's variance request, twelve-foot variance to allow eight-foot rear-back setback in lieu of the twenty-foot minimum rear yard setback specified by planned unit development zoning for Morgan Creek Preserve to allow for a new screen room with a hard roof on property located at forty-six ninety-three Lethola? Did I say that right? Lethola Loop?
Lethola, yeah, yes.
Anyone here to speak on this? Good morning, sir. Please.
And I believe, did you get sworn in earlier? I think you came in after we had already sworn in everyone. Have you been sworn in? I think you came in a little bit later.
Yeah, I didn't get the parking, so.
Okay, no worries. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
State your name, please.
It's Karki, four-six-nine-three Lethola Loop, Lakeland.
What's about your request?
Just I want to extra room for the backside, so that's why I request, and I don't know about the seat back for the twenty feet, and that's maybe not twenty feet left for the, when I make the twelve feet, thirteen feet some requested for the back porch or back room, what the, all that one, even I don't know the word it says.
Why don't we ask staff to come up and show us their presentation, and you can make your comments as they go through, if it'd be easier for you.
Good morning again. Damaris Stoll, senior planner of community economic development. The property is zoned PUD, forty-eight eighteen, and under Morgan Creek Properties, within suburban neighborhood context district. This request is for a twelve-foot variance to allow eight-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the twenty-foot minimum setback for the rear yard specified in the PUD Morgan Creek zoning, to allow for the screen room with the hard roof on property located forty-six ninety-three Lethola Loop. With this, the subject property consists of an irregular-shaped lot, about point-one-three acre, with an interior lot with an existing home of approximately twenty-seven hundred square feet, a single-family detached home. The proposed request is to obtain for a screen room fourteen by forty. Let's see here. So see on the site plan, let's see. This here is the area, the shortest area to the property line.
Not drawn on scale, but it would be measured perpendicularly from the northeast corner of the screen room there to the back property line. So really, if you look at the shape of the lot, as you go further east, you get closer to that, to that property line.
It's eight feet from that shortest line, and then it's from the, from this corner, it's approximately eighteen feet and forty-one inches to the property line.
From the south side, eighteen feet? Okay.
This here is images of the rear property facing south. And this is the north boundary facing east towards the adjacent property. And this is the northeast facing west. And northeast boundary facing north. As you can see, the property is abutted with wooden, wooded area. That's all property of Morgan Creek subdivision. This here is the northwest boundary facing north, and then the northwest boundary facing northeast. And, let's see here. So the request relief would not be contrary to public interest. The specific hardship suffered is not due to any action taken by the applicant. The amount relief requested is minimum amount necessary to accommodate the screen room due to the irregular lot shape and other, and no other viable alternatives for the property, and staff recommends that the request be considered for approval. I'll stand for any questions.
Put back the picture that shows.
Site plan?
Site plan, thank you. Fourteen by forty. Any questions? Comments? Your motion? Motion and a second? Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Mr. Kent, yes. It's approved. Thank you.
Give any minutes. Thank you.
Any unfinished?
We do have a new planner we would like to welcome today, Audrey McGuire. If you want to stand up here. Audrey just joined us. She came from the city of Zephyr Hills, so she is replacing Joshua Chaney, who left last fall. So you will be seeing her in the coming months. Here is a bright, shiny new face, so we just want to welcome her aboard and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Longest meeting. It's happened that I was the chair, so I'm not sure if that's a.
We want to hold it against you.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. Thanks, staff, for your, everything you do. I appreciate y'all very much and the board. Thank you all.
Before we adjourn, I think there was a question that Ms. Tesmer had about next month's meeting because of the holiday as well, so.
Should be on Wednesday, the fifth, is my understanding, whenever it's a holiday. Yes, so commission's going to be on Monday, the third.
Right.
Well, be on the fifth. We should be back in our regular room. We'll be finished by then, so.
Return, thank you.